Getting geeky with Gamer Leaf, the podcast in which one man strives to level up his geekhood and helping you do the same, one battle at a time. Now, let's get geeky with Gamer Leaf.
In order to build the city, you and the other councilmen must maintain a low level of pollution, fight crime, create jobs, and sustain an adequate city budget. As a member of the council, you must also strive to gain the favor of the different political groups who rule the streets of your city, in hopes of ultimately becoming the new mayor.
Did that sound familiar to you guys? It didn't to me neither, but this is a story of City Council: The Deluxe Edition, which is now on Kickstarter for a couple more days. And tonight, we're looking out to have on Elad, who is the creator and mastermind behind this great game. Is that correct, Elad? Is that how you fall in line with City Council: The Deluxe Edition?
Yeah, I'm doing good. Thank you for following me.
No problem. We really enjoy having you. Thanks so much for joining us on Getting Geeky with Gamer Leaf. Now, before we get into this great game, let's rewind a little bit if we could. We don't have to go back too far, of course, unless you were born into tabletop board gaming. But how did you get started into playing tabletop board games and whatnot?
Well, you know, as a kid, we started out playing games. And me situated and located in Israel, so we didn't have much board games back then. So like, I was saving my whole allowance and everything just to buy one board game every year, something like that. But then, you know, that's all we have. We have like five, six board games. And so what I did is I just started creating stuff on my own. An early age, I was designing in the raw, you know, working concept and mechanics and stuff like that. It was like a hobby for me.
That's cool. Do you remember which games you had to save a year or four to play?
Yeah, we had like, I think our own Hero Quest version, that was, you know, Talisman versions, and you know, old Diplomacy. I think I still own it, like the very first Hebrew version of Diplomacy. It was like, really barely produced, but you know, still have it, stuff like that.
Awesome. So mine is City Council Deluxe Edition, or any of your games. Do you have a current favorite game? Because I will let you pick your own game. My audience might have me drug out into the street and do who knows what to me.
I would say, I would say Codenames, I think, by far. I think I played it the most. And it's just really quick and fun game that you, and addictive. You play it once, and then you play it one, you know, second time, third time, fourth time. There's never enough. So that's, to me, it's such a perfect game.
I've seen that on the shelf a time or two, but never played it. So per se, someone else out there like me that has never played that game, what can you tell us about Codenames?
Oh, it's a kind of a clone between a party game and a war game. It's really easy. Everybody plays in groups of spies, and you have a spy master. And the spy master will try to give you away a clue, which will consist with one word and one number. And that, and that clue will, you know, you have all of those words on the table, and he will try to connect with one clue, a couple or more words that he relates to. So you're, you know, it goes back and forth. So you're trying to find out which one of those words are the codenames for your agents, for your team agents. And once you can contact with every one of them, you know, guess right, then you win the game. And there is assassin and everything. So it's a really, really neat game. You can play it like with seven, six, eight, even 10 guys. So and ladies, of course, but it's just terrific game.
What would be one thing you would do to fix or make Codenames better if you own the rights to it?
I don't know. They are doing pretty cool stuff right now. So like they have like Mazel and Disney, and you know, I don't know if you know the game. It's pretty much perfect. So I wouldn't touch anything.
So word on the street is you have a new game on Kickstarter. What can you tell us about City Council: The Deluxe Version?
Yeah, so City Council, it's not a new game. The base game, we had a Kickstarter back in 2013. And it was, released on Spiel SN in 2013. So the base game is a negotiation game. It's really, I think it's ahead of its time. And this is why I chose to come back and do the second time around with the Deluxe Edition. Because what makes him apart is it's about building a city like many other games. But in this game, it's not about just building a city. It's building together as, you know, as a group of politicians, you're trying to decide together what's best for the city moving forward. And everybody has its own secret agenda. Like there are cards where, you know, important groups in the city, like political groups, will try to ask you to do something. Like the socialist will try to ask you, we need a new high school and stuff like that. And you will have those cards in your hands. So the way you win the game is by answering those favors and giving them, and they will give you a vote back. So you will try to be the next mayor, right? And you do that by answering, you know, scoring the most favorable cards you can. So while you're trying to move your own agenda, the other five or four, sorry, councilmen will have their own secret agendas. And they have completely different set of agendas. So you're trying to cooperate while trying to score your own. So it's a, it's really, really unique political negotiation game when you're trying to pull and string and give your, you know, your friends some promises and then give them back your vote and vote for their, you know, offers and buildings. So by the end, you have a four city, you know, you cannot fail. Because if you run the city completely selfish, it will, you know, destroy itself. And the government will come in and, you know, remove the city council and place a new one. And so you have, you have a communal goal to have a successful city. But the one that moves the city to his direction, or better, answers his voters, he will be the one that will be the next mayor for the city. So.
So if you don't play nice or together, the board might win the game?
You don't have to play nice, to be honest. I saw many games turned out ugly, but you know, and the city was okay, doing fine. But if you are all selfish and you know, you don't want to hear about anything, just, let's say, everybody builds factories and stuff that polluted the city, then the pollution level will go so high, everybody will not want to immigrate into the city. So the city will actually, you know, run down really quick. So you have to deal with crime rate, pollution, and power supply. And the budget is really tight in the game. So you need to manage all of that. And of course, unemployment factor is very, very important. So you need to manage all of that, which sounds like a real city council. But that, this is what city council do. Again, give you an immersive experience about how to be a politician.
Okay, so have you been on a city council? How do you know so much about it?
I am not. And you know, I'm not connected to anything, you know, politic related. But I research it quite a bit. And I was always fascinated by city building games. I love those games. And this is basically my homage for that. And it's just a really different, different look. For like, city building is just a theme here. It's not the game.
Okay, so it sounds like negotiation is a big part of this game. What makes this game so deluxe compared to the original version?
Yeah, so over the years, I made a couple of expansion to support the game. So the first one where it came out with the first Kickstarter was the government agent. But actually, people told me that the game was quite short. So what I did, I added more favor cards that give the games a bit longer, and a new favor, like a new faction in the game that actually tell you to do like really crazy stuff. Like the government agent would try to do like, you know, crazy experiments on this new city. So you need to listen to him. He will grant you some really cool points. And that's the first expansion that actually adds more to the game, but not offering anything else. The second expansion was the disaster deck, which actually turned the game into, it was in 2015, I think it was, the first edition came out. So it will turn the game into from a competitive game into a cooperative game. So it's like you're playing SimCity all together and trying to save the city because a series of really terrible events will, you know, explode on the city. And the city will have like a zombie attack, or I don't want to spoil, but you just, you know, try to think about the worst thing that can happen to your city. While you're trying to build it, it will destroy it, and you need to act together. So it's a really cool feature of the game. So you can play competitive and then cooperative. And what's also really new about this Deluxe Edition, we added even a new feature, which is a solitaire mode. So with a solitaire mode, you can play all alone, like you play the old video game, trying to build the city and maintain it against those disaster coming and other effects that, you know, local politics that might, might change your, your plan on how to run the city to flourish one. So those basically are the three main stuff. And I think I added to the Kickstarter also some couple of cool tokens. I'm checking right now to see if I can add even more. Because the base game is actually really well made with really cool wooden pieces. And the quality was top notch, so you know, I cannot top that much. But couple of tokens, like the first player token, and you know, I had a wooden token replacement, and some cool plastic tokens to track like the crime rate and to track the pollution rate better on the board. But that's about it.
So you're probably pretty biased at being your game and all. So would there be anybody else that might have reviewed it that they can check out and see what they thought about City Council?
Uh, yeah, we had Rado, did a run through, and then he has his own final thoughts. We had, actually didn't have much media coverage for the game. Because back then in 2013, there weren't as much as media, you know, contributor and reviewers at all. Like you had, I think, Orney back then just began experimenting, like doing full run-throughs with his phone and stuff like that. So it's really early back then. And to be honest, I think it was quite ahead of its time back then. Because there wasn't much negotiation games at all and social games. It was more like, back then, like Euro Renaissance, you know, worker placement, tech building game and stuff like that. That was the hot ones. And this is why I decided to do it right now. For me, it was like to see if the game still has market. And to be honest, the reaction from backers, and I get a lot of emails about, I wanted to try this game forever, I couldn't see it anywhere and stuff like that. So thank you for bringing it back and stuff like that. So the acceptance is really, really, really cool. And you know, City Council was always one of our best sellers.
Awesome. I love Rado's work. Now, per se, somebody's fallen asleep, but it wouldn't be because of you or this great game. It'd be because of me and my podcast. At the time of recording, what, it's the middle of June, and we've already released 94 episodes for the year? So they get a little tired of hearing me ramble on and on. So, but now they're suddenly jolted awake, so they don't hit the oncoming traffic. And you have their full attention. Why should they take a chance on City Council Deluxe Version, especially with all the other great games that are on the Kickstarters currently?
Well, the main reason is that hopefully they will hear it while it runs. This is the only opportunity to buy this edition. I only limited it because I don't have any plans to do, you know, a third print for an expansion or something like that. So this is basically it. And also the price point, because the base game is, you know, is back from 20, I don't know, 15, the reprint, the last reprint we had. So the cost is really low. Yeah, I offered it for 39 dollars with free shipping in the US, which is very, 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 very affordable. So and to have a really unique game, it's not just another worker placement. It's not another board game. It's really something that unique. And I can promise you, you don't have any game like this one in your collection.
You're reading that, right? That there's free shipping to the US for this game?
All have free shipping to the US and very affordable shipping across the globe. So compared to other Kickstarter and other, you know, same sized game. So like for a European guy, you can back it for, you need only to have like $10. And it's very affordable.
And it ends pretty soon. Will it be available for people listening to this later?
Yeah, the June 21st, that's the last day. To be, I don't think so. I'm already asked to provide more copies, like to unlock. And I talked to my printer, and it's, it might be brutal. Because I also had like a really quick turnaround. I think the base, the deluxe, yeah, we planned to ship it by August.
Wow, that quick?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I want to keep every, every of my, you know, my promises intact. So I don't want to say, yeah, I have another one, other copies, and I cannot provide them in time. So I need to limit it. This is, and also, we didn't ask much for money, like our goal was, you know, $2,500. So it should be a small homage about City Council. And I can tell you like one more thing. If you like the style of the game, and I had only positive, you know, only positive, you know, feedback from this project. So I hope, I might announce it like in a week or two or something like that. But we might do a spin-off game based on City Council using the, this cool negotiation mechanics with the city building on maybe another game that we plan maybe to publish next year or something like that. So if you can, just if you back it even for $1, so you get, you know, in touch with us and follow us. And you know, maybe even try just to get the basic game, which is really cool by aiming for $29. And you know, maybe someday, you know, down the line, we can refocus and maybe produce more expansion or, you know, something more for the fans.
That looks like this isn't your first rodeo or first game on Kickstarter, am I right?
Yeah, I think it's, it was my 12, yeah, 12, 12th project. Yeah, we published more than almost 20 games already. And yeah, so City Council was my second board game back in 2013. And you know, it's still one of the most successful ones we had through the years. As an indie publisher, it's really good to have something unique on your catalog and not just a clone or, you know, a riffing or whiskey or stuff like that.
Wow, you started in the early days, like 2012 or 2011?
Yeah, we started in 2011, actually. We had, yeah, back then Kickstarter was really small. And this is where I started to turning from like a real amateur hobbyist and passionate game designer. And I decided then to publish and go forward to try to publish. My first game was, it was Fallen City of Kharees, which was, it was, the first goal on was a fail one. I couldn't reach, you know, back then, $10,000 or something like that. And I was, I think, the first one that I canceled it, and I relaunched it in two weeks. And we got around $60,000. And it was a big success back then because I think only like five, six months later, like Coolminis started to blast like $250 or something like that. So Kickstarter was very, very small and very, very indie and very, very small. We like, you run like, we have four games online, something like that. We had like, I think back then, VD Culture, me and another game that I don't remember. But that's, that's back then in like 2011. So I think overall, they had like 50 online.
Wow, that's crazy. Because only a couple Tuesdays ago, they had launched like 29 games or more there on the Kickstarters. It's exploding.
Oh, yeah. Right now, I think it's running about 400 and 500 games, I think. Project that tagged like games, it's crazy. Every year, it's going up. And I was out for the last two years because I couldn't, we had, we had issues with our last one. And we couldn't, I couldn't do anything new because I wanted to fix that one. But it went really sour, that, you know, I managed to fulfill maybe half of the pledges in 2016. And we have some issues with the game. But right now, it just, it just exploded. So you have a lot of project, but you have a lot of backers to support you. So like two years ago, you have a lot of project, but the, you know, you didn't have much backers to back your game, you know, running around. Right now, there are such, it's such a huge market. And, and you need to, and we changed also our model. We are just, we made a nine-day, really simple, really affordable, and really quick turnaround project. So we might, you know, because I having such a positive reaction and positive feedback, and actually, the results are surpassing my, surpassing my, my, oh, yeah. So we might just revisit that with the next, you know, with our next project. Because this way, we can do a quick one. People, we will not, you know, be there and overdue with information and just pull on your stuff that you don't care about, you know, updates and blah, 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 and everything. And in a short-term period of time, we will find what we need. And then we can move forward quickly to fulfill it faster than the usual ones. Because once you have a bigger project, then you have all of those huge stretch goals and stuff that you need to put in that actually set you back from production. So for me, it was, I don't want to say an experiment, but I actually thought about it a lot to change the pace, to change the narrative on how Kickstarter run. And so far, so good. Because I can manage it, and I can see the light at the end of the tunnel, that I can actually fulfill it by the end of August, like in two months, I can, I can turn it around.
Yeah, I remember I had Jamie Stegmaier on that episode, and he talked about how much time it took. That's why, one of the reasons he left Kickstarter.
Oh, yeah. It's not just time. It takes a lot off you. And I'm a creative guy. I'm not, I'm not a marketing guy or stuff like that. All I want to do is just, you know, design games and develop game and to see them played. That's it. And I'm not, you know, if a game project will do $1 million, I would be grateful. But it's not, it's not my end goal. I'm not trying to do, do this to, you know, to make like kazillion dollars. I'm trying to fund what I need right now, so I can move forward. That's it. So and to have the games in the market, and everybody can play the games, and have more games, more unique games specifically in the market. So having a long project, like Jamie stated, I was not only occupied by definition, by the time I needed to spend individually on answering comments and backers and doing updates and dealing with other stuff. It's also mentally, you know, I couldn't sleep well at some days and nights. And I couldn't, I became more, you know, my health deteriorated and stuff like that. It was real. It's a real, there is an upside and a downside. And definitely doing a full-blown with a lot of, you have so much responsibility. And it takes a toll. And it's, it's, I don't know, I don't think I will do any like big-scale project anytime soon because the effect that it may be, may take on me. And this will affect the other games that I want to push forward.
If I'm namaspetaken, you guys have some other upcoming games that you're gonna launch pretty soon, am I right?
So after this success project, we might, we're still not 100%, but I think, I think we will go forward with a new one in July. And it will be in the end of July. It's a new game that I designed. It's, it's still kind of a secret, but I think that at this point, when people will hear this podcast, it won't be. So it's, it's called Dice and Dragons. I know it's a cliche or something like that, but it's a really cool RPG game. And it's based on, it's a dice game. It's a, it's kind of a roll and write. It's not roll and write because it's an RPG. You write down your skills and hit points and everything. So in the game, basically, you're playing like a party of heroes. It's a cooperative fantasy game that everybody is going into a party, and you're trying to slay dragons. So the dragons are menacing this fantasy realm. And you're trying to go out, starting with your very first one, trying to slay this one. And you will try to move on. So there is a really, really cool campaign book made for the game. And you follow through eight different breeds of dragons with different, unique special ability that you try. You have five base classes, classes that you can choose from, like, you know, warrior, wizard, ranger, rogue, and a cleric. And once you move, you know, you successfully slay one, and then there is a really, really simple but intriguing level-up system. So once you follow up the campaign, you can actually level up from level one, simple cleric, to a level five. And I think by the end, it, you know, you can see the character development grows as the game grows. And it's a, it should be a very small kind of game with a lot of content. Like we are trying to make it about $20, all in all. And we are planning also to post a lot of free downloaded content. So in like future adventures and stuff like that, you can just download it, print it in your, in your printer, and just roll and play. Really simple. Oh, yeah, yeah. Once we will get closer to the release, and we will have more, more meaningful information to give away. Right now, it's just, just a really cool game that we're all very, very, you know, stoked to. Just a really cool game that we're all very, very um, you know, uh stoked to to announce and. Hopefully to get uh um fans of our games around this game.
The next portion of our podcast is Adventures in Application Acquisition, where we talk about an app, be it for a cell phone, a tablet. A computer, even a video game. It doesn't even necessarily have to relate to city councils or board games for that matter. Is there an app you use a lot of that we can talk about for a moment, Elad?
An app? Oh, uh no, I'm 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 not a huge tech guy, to be honest, so. Uh I'm I'm uh. Old-fashioned, I don't know. I'm pretty young, but I'm I'm kind of, I don't, I don't use much, you know, uh rather than, you know, uh. Ways to navigate my car and stuff like that, uh you know, nothing.
We can talk about that if you want.
Oh yeah, okay, if you want to, no problem.
So what app do you use to nag a vet get your car?
Here in Israel, you have Google Maps, but it works, uh it's it's uh it has a problem uh with the Hebrew language. It's all English. So. If you happen to know how you can spell the English version of what you're trying to visit, that's cool because it's it's really. Really good navigation app because it gives you all the details and, you know, which lane to keep and everything. Uh but the other one, what that's it's 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 kind of a local, it's called Waze, and I think you have it also in the States. Which is a really, really cool one. You can just, you you know, use voiceover and everything and it understand Hebrew, of course, and he knows everything in Hebrew. The the downside, it's that it's not a great navigation or directing uh app at all because it. It uh it usually do like turn left and and then you miss the left, like it just tell you to go left. On the wrong time or stuff like that.
Yeah, I remember back before we had like cell phone tracking or whatnot. We had an old Garmin GPS and. I remember we were trying to get somewhere and it totally had me thrown for a loophole. It lost me like over and over again. For a long time, I couldn't trust GPS.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So love and hate relations between those two. Uh if I can find the spa- the the spot with my Google map, then this is my first goal. If I can't, I go with ways. Usually I I I would like to navigate on my own, but uh sometimes you need it because, you know. Traffic jams and, you know, roadblocks and stuff like that. You you need, you need the information, so.
So if you own the rights to the Waze app, what would be one thing you would do to fix it or make it better, Elad?
Uh I know that Google already bought it, so I don't know why they are not integrating. The cool feature with ways with the Google Maps. I I know they're trying to, but it just, you know. I I think it screams like, take the good things from ways and put it in, you know, into the Google Maps and then you will have a perfect. I I I only can recommend, I have no idea on on how to do those kind of things.
So minus coming over there to your home country to stalk you, how would people go about finding you or what you guys have going on in the future?
The best way is to follow us on Facebook and uh we have a Twitter account. Which uh it's it's going up and down as as I can see, but you know, Facebook is the only way you can actually follow us like. Uh real time. And we have a website. We are trying to fix it. It's 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 a new website, so it's it's a it's a growing pain, but uh. Hopefully by the end of this year, the website will function and 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 will look much better and. And 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 we will have a news section that will actually give you news uh uh. On 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 the on the same pace, we are, you know, planning to develop games and stuff like that, so developing stories and everything. Yeah, Golden Age Games, you just type it in the search and on on Twitter, on Instagram, we are at Golden Age Games. You can follow us and. And we post really cool pictures from what's coming uh from the convention we goes out. So you can, you can see. You know, how our game played and stuff like that and, you know, any news we have, we posted there.
Thank you so much for, Elad, for coming on Getting Geeky with Gamer Leaf. We really appreciate it. You have a good night.
Thank you very much for having me. It was good.
It's time for Kickstarter Corner. To begin now.
So you better get on that. Last game, we just talked about City Council Deluxe Edition, as it's almost no longer available. Anyway, let's get on with the Kickstarter Corner, shall we? Wait, first, have you gone and signed up for our mailing list? You better hurry and do that over at gamerealeafgo.com as we send out sometimes early content or exclusive content. We just recently sent out a mailing list that you'll get Wednesday's episode early. So if you wanna get those episodes early or something like that, you better go ahead and check us out over at gamerealeafgo.com. Anyway, let's get on with it, shall we? Before everyone wakes up. So first off, we've got Dark Naga. Carcosa, the fifth edition. Uh nonlinear adventure in the classic sandbox style, where the party eleven and twelve level. Fight to escape the lair of the old one Haster. You better check this one out. They are funded and they're going through, what? They got less than two weeks to go? Going through the first of July. Can you believe it's that far in the year? Well, you better check out this one. By Nar- Dark Naga Adventures. It's a pretty fun one from what it looks like. Next, we've got Last One In, which is a zombie-themed. Card game. We had Mark, the creator, on it, the show the other day, and he also appeared on We're Not Wizard, which is one of my favorite podcasts. But anyways, Last One In is a two-to-four player zombie-themed card game where players race to save civilians. Or flood their opponent's town in with zombies. Definitely check this one out. They're going for, what, just over two weeks? They're going through the third of July. Next, we've got Dragon Scales Fantasy RPG by James M. Ward and Stephen A. Lee. It's a new fantasy RPG. Based on James M. Ward's card system, explore the chromatic kingdoms, the city of Concord and the Great Rift Canyon. Dave got three weeks to go, so definitely check out this one like we usually do. We'll leave all the links in the show notes. This one. You know, again, I don't know if you have to not use dice or whatnot, but yeah, definitely check it out as it's based on a card system. Next, we've got Lunar Five Thousand. It's a board game where players build and race in a personalized spaceship. Win the dice at the table, will you be the win in the winner's circle? Hopefully, the Leafs will be reviewing this game. It's from Mindbent Ideas. And then we've got something from Freshwater Game Company. It's called Circle Breaker. It's a casual strategy game. That can be played solo or with up to two other friends, featuring retro style and a crafting mouse. And this one looks like you're trying to rewire the house, if I looked at it right. It looks pretty fun. Definitely give that one a check out. They're going, what, just over. Three weeks. They're going through the twelfth of July, so definitely give that a look. And then. We've got the Forgotten Dungeon Mega Adventure. It's a D and D, a D and D five E. At DS and seven-seven W. The Forgotten Dungeon is an old-school adventure. That incorporates legendary artists from the days of TSR. A D and D, D and D fifth edition, seventy-seven W and DSRPG. Definitely check this one out. They have funded and they've got, what, forty-two days to go, going through the end of July. So if you need something. Later on to back, go ahead and back it. The sooner the better, though, as they can reach more stretch goals. And then last but not least on today's Kickstarter Corner is Castle Madness, The Stars Are Right, a Lovecraftian cult building game. For two to four players in which you are the old one. Definitely check this one out. They've only got forty-three hours to go at the time of this recording. So it's getting really close. If you wanna get this game and help it bring delight. All of you listeners right now are gonna have to go over there and pledge, even if it just be a dollar, go ahead and back this game. You could, there's like pledges for five dollars and twenty-five dollar, well, twenty-nine in the US. So definitely. Give it a check out on the Kickstarter, on Kickstarter Corner. Make sure you sign up for our mailing list so you can never miss a thing again. And we'll try to do better. Usually I send them out every two weeks. I wanna get to every week, but by the time I forget and stuff, then it's already been two weeks. But anyways, it's our least favorite time, your least favorite time, time for us to get on with our lives and you to get on with yours. So in the meantime, I hope you get geeky, stay geeky and bring others in the geek fold. We'll catch you all on the flip side. Gamer Leaf out.
Gamer Leaf levels up. Tune in next week to see if Gamer Leaf's luck holds up.